I've got to order the city council regular meeting of Lathir Village. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Present.
Councilmember Canes.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. I invite everyone that's in the audience to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the agenda.
Thank you. We have a presentation, a proclamation honoring Loretta Deloach. Deloach, excuse me. Is Loretta here? Yeah, come up to the podium, please. So this is... It is my absolute pleasure to do this, to honor you. Whereas Ms. Loretta Deloach, born August 22nd, 1933, was the third African-American baby born at Highland Park General Hospital, whereas Ms. Deloach started her career at Michigan Bell in 1953, where she was dedicated, she was a dedicated employee and adored by coworkers. She retired from AT&amp;T in 1993. Whereas Ms. Deloach has been an active resident of Lathir Village for 42 years and believes this truly is the best place to live on earth. Whereas Ms. Deloach has been an active member of the Lathir Village Women's Club for 40 years, serving as president of the organization twice, and she also served on the Lathir Village Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Therefore, let it be known that we recognize the deep commitment in service of Loretta Deloach and her love for this community, understanding full well that because of her, Lathir Village is a better place to live and grow. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Mike Kel Garrett, Mayor of the City of the Lathir Village, and on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Lathir Village, want to wish you a very happy 90-plus birthday?
Nine plus zero.
And then nine plus zero, and appreciate the wonderful work and enthusiasm for this community. I thank you so much for everything. Please, don't say something if you want.
I just want to...
It's on.
It's on?
Yep.
I just want to say, I think they've made a mistake years ago on my birth certificate. And I've been fighting this for years, but the Highland Park General Hospital's closed down, and they can't seem to find the records. So it's something I have to live with. And it's not 90-plus. The word N-I-N-E-T-Y makes my liver quiver. It really does. And so I said, it's nine plus zero. And if anybody says anything else, in my purse, I have Taser, and I have Miller. If I hear that N-I-N-E-T-Y, it's on. I want to thank the city, and I do love, love Lathir. It says, "It takes the village," and always says, "Lathir Village is the village for me." God bless.
Thank you. One, I want to say thank you so much for all that you've done for Lathir Village. Mr. Deloach? Thank you. I appreciate it. And next, we have the Oakland County, Oakland Community Health Network National Recovery Month. And this is something that we do every year for September 2023, only because I love Ms. Deloach's, why I read all of yours, but I would not be reading all the rest of them. So the first one is, whereas according to the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, in 2021, 16.5% of Americans, or 46.3 million people 12 years or older, were classified as having a substance use disorder in the past year, including 29.5 million people who were classified as having an alcohol use disorder, and 24 million people who were classified as having a drug use disorder. Whereas substance use recovery is important for individuals' well-being and vitality, as well as families, friends, communities, and businesses. And whereas stigma and stereotypes associated with substance use disorders often keep people from seeking treatment that can improve their quality of life. And whereas substance use disorder recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling people to live in a community of their choice while striving to achieve their full potential. And whereas substance use disorder recovery benefits individuals with substance use disorder by focusing on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to society, and enriches the community culture. And now therefore, be it resolved that Oakland Community Health Network hereby recognizes September 2023 as National Recovery Month. OCHN calls upon individuals, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, faith-based organizations, and schools to recommit our state to increasing awareness and understanding of substance abuse use and the need for appropriate and accessible services to promote recovery. The next one is Oakland Community Health Network National Suicide Prevention Month. Whereas September is known as National Suicide Prevention Month and is intended to help raise awareness surrounding suicide prevention, whereas, excuse me, sorry, resources available in the community. And whereas Grilled Suicide Prevention Day is observed each year on September 10th. And whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, each year more than 48,000 people die by suicide. And whereas organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, and National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, 988, work to help individuals in crisis and provide resources to shed light on this highly stigmatized topic. And whereas Oakland Community Health Network is committed to being a zero-suicide organization and cultivate a network of providers who are engaged in the zero-suicide philosophy. Now therefore, be it resolved that Oakland Community Health Network hereby recognizes September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention Month. OCHN calls upon our individuals, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, faith-based organizations, and schools to recommit our state to increasing awareness and understanding of suicide prevention and the need for appropriate and accessible services to assist individuals in crisis. And yeah, that's... Next on the agenda is public commitment for, excuse me, commitment, public comment for items on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. If there's anyone that wants to speak for items that's on the agenda, you have three minutes to speak. You come to the podium. You do not give your address. If there was anyone that would like to speak?
I'm Lori Coons, Lathir resident, speaking about the agenda. And I would just like to say that I don't think the minute should be approved from the 8/7 meeting for many reasons. There were multiple infractions, behaviors that were unacceptable and should be addressed. I believe something should be done about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name is Jason Hammond, 19-year resident of Lathir Village. I wanted to thank Ms. Deloach for everything she's done for our city, and I appreciate that the city is recognizing her. She's been a part of so many different events through the Lathir Village Women's Club and so many other things, a community, she's a person who brings the community together. It's something I think that the city needs desperately, and so I appreciate you being an example to provide that for all of us. I want to speak in favor of the item about the water main project. I think it's important that this project actually get done, get done appropriately. I appreciate the fact that the recommendation is to take the lowest bid that has been put in front of us and just encourage the city council. Presumably, you've already done your homework, and you figured out that there isn't anything deficient in there that maybe a higher-cost project would address, that the lower-cost project wouldn't address. If there are no gaps, then by all means, please approve the lower-cost project. I think it's important that it get done. And I read the meeting minutes from the August 7 meeting, and they look appropriate to me. They capture what was done and what was said. I don't see any issues with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard, or anything that's on the agenda for this evening? Hearing none. Consent agenda. Someone wants to...
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. There is no discussion, so going to... Roll call, please.
Shoot, I want to pull some...
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller. Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Action requests for consideration and approval. We have the Southfield-Lincoln Water Main Project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Scott Rundler with Giffords Webster. Before you tonight is our recommendation for a contract award for the Lincoln-Southfield Water Main Directional Drilling Project. This was an invitation to bid. We submitted this to five qualified contractors that specialize in directional drilling. The city received two bids. The low bid was from Lawrence M. Clark for $151,550, and the second low bid was submitted by DeAngelo Brothers at $182,880. Lawrence Clark has been in business since 1981. They do directional drilling every day. Again, this is a 12-inch diameter HDPE pipe being drilled across the Southfield Road from the east side of Lincoln to the west side of Lincoln, and reconnecting them water mains on the east side, north side, west side, and actually the emergency connection that goes to City of Southfield.
Thank you. Suggest a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Lawrence M. Clark for performing the work on Lincoln-Southfield Water Main Directional Drilling Contract for the amount of $151,550.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Motion, excuse me, roll call.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is consideration of a HydroCorp proposal.
Yes, Mayor and Council. HydroCorp has been doing our cross-connection control backflow prevention program for us so that we are, the connections of the businesses and that aren't putting backflow into our system and that. And we have been using them. They help us with our annual report. I don't know where my cover letter went. I don't see it. But they have been helping us do this project, and we have been working with them probably for the last six years or more on this project. And every year, they go out and do about 50 of them, and they send out letters, they go back for rechecks, they're constantly out there, they're always checking with the office when they're out in the field doing the work. So I would recommend that we would stay with HydroCorp for our cross-connection program.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to...
Sorry.
Are you on guard?
Page 76.
Yeah, 76.
No, I got you. I'm sorry. Motion to approve the renewal proposal from HydroCorp for two years at an annual rate of $6,384 for a total of $12,768.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion?
Go ahead.
Sure.
I just had a question. So for the public relations program, I wanted to know, could we get a copy of the information that they send out to the residents when they, I just want to see...
What they send out?
Yeah, what they send out.
The letter? They actually are the businesses that they...
Yeah, commercial.
They do the commercial.
Okay.
They do commercial. But yes, I can get that for you.
Thank you.
One question, Pam, maybe we know the answer to, answer is, so I noticed in the contract, they provide up to six vacuum breakers if they, if they find a issue at a particular business. Is that included, or do they end up billing us back for that on top of the $12,000 that we're paying for the two years?
No, they don't.
It's included?
I think they would bill the...
Bill, they would.
The bill, or the...
The equipment.
The, they wouldn't bill us. I think they would bill the business.
Got it. Thanks.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have the Oakland County Assessing Contract.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Oakland County has been doing our assessing for 20-some years. I've been here almost 23, and they've been our assessor ever since then. They are asking for a 4% increase this year for the assessing. It does save the city from having to bring in our own assessor to have to pay the benefits, fringe benefits for the assessor and have substantial time. And they do, they work with us very well. Oakland County does a lot for the city, and even the treasures department part of it, they do a lot. They work really closely with us. So I would recommend that we renew their contract once again.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Oakland County Equalization City of Lathir Village Contract for Assessing Services through June 30th, 2024, and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the related documents.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. How is this different from the inter-local agreement for a designated assessor that we approved in November through 2027?
That, you have to do that because that is the overall assessor for the whole, for Oakland County. He's the assessor for Oakland County. This is for us, for just our city.
Okay, and then we have to approve the specific assessor? Is that what you're saying?
You have to approve the assessor because they, there were one assessor left, and so they brought in a new assessor. So whenever they bring in a new assessor, you have to approve that assessor.
Thanks.
I have one question.
Yes.
It says contract year 2012 to 2023?
It should be 2021. Or 22, I'm sorry.
Oh, so they're usually just one year.
Yeah, okay. Sometimes they'll go two-year. But lately, they've been doing a one-year contract.
Did they talk to you at all about the 4% increase? I think, I think you said it. I might have not been paying attention.
They didn't, haven't said anything about it, I know.
Okay. No big deal. I just...
Any additional? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have the adopt zoning tax amendments for, adopt zoning tax amendments. Ooh, trucks.
I'll let our attorney take that one.
So this came from the Planning Commission. This was a discussion that the Planning Commission had with respect to the location where food trucks will be permitted. Currently, mobile food vending trucks were only permitted in the Village Center District. This would allow for mobile food truck vendors to set up in the mixed-use district, the MX District, in addition to the Village Center District. Planning Commission did approve this, the first reading of this, and made a recommendation to the plant, or to the city council to approve it. One of the questions that did come up, it's worth noting, because a lot of people ask the same question, but was if a private property owner or a residential property owner were to contract, like say, with a food truck for a graduation party, would they not be allowed to do that because they're in a residential district? And just to answer that, the question, the answer is no. They, they are not prevented from doing that. So yes, they can have that, and the difference being that this ordinance will only apply to mobile food truck vendors that are offering their services to the general public, not catered for a private event. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if not.
Do you need to make a motion?
Need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning tax amendment for mobile food truck in the MX District.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion?
I was just going to say that the, just add to what you said, Scott, the ordinance is exactly the same as it is for the...
Current ordinance.
Current ordinance. It just, all it does is adds the MX District to the, to the existing ordinance.
What prompted this? Usually, there's something that prompts it.
Yeah, so the, Suzie Steck had received a number of, she's the one that has kind of been facilitating these food trucks. She had received a number of requests for food truck vendors to set up in locations other than the Village Center. I don't have the exact number, but it was enough that there were more people wanting to go into the mixed-use district than the Village Center. So Planning Commission discussed it and determined that expansion of it was, was appropriate.
Yeah, I believe several of them were for events. They wanted to have a food truck associated with a vent, like a grand opening kind of thing.
Yep. Question. So when they're bringing the food trucks here, are they allowed to put them in the alley? Or is it just, does it have to be in front of the building?
It's supposed to be in front of the building. It's not supposed to be, because the alley's not intended for parking in general. The alley's not intended for parking, so they wouldn't be allowed to set up in the alley. The requirements require that they, there's a minimum number of spaces and criteria that they're required to adhere to.
Okay.
The alley wouldn't be an appropriate site for that.
I just wanted to make sure that...
Not sure how much business they'd sell in the alley.
Well, you know, our Lathir Village Business District does some strange things, so just wanted to make sure.
Any other discussions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we'll adopt tax amendments for laundromat facilities.
Likewise, this was a request that came to the Planning Commission from a business property owner that is considering or is contemplating opening a laundromat, and our ordinance was silent with respect to, primarily with respect to parking requirements for laundromat facilities. So Planning Commission had some extensive discussions over what would be an appropriate standard for the minimum number of parking spaces. Ultimately, they decided upon one parking space for every four laundry machines, includes washing machines and dryers. That was surprisingly a big point of discussion. So before you tonight, this is the recommended ordinance that was approved by Planning Commission and forwarded to council for approval.
Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the self-service laundromat tax amendments, as noted in the packet.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. They're already advertising that they're coming, so I guess they're pretty sure that this is going to happen.
Yeah, they, so this, they were, and I don't want, again, I don't want to speak for Ms. Steck, but I know that they were attempting to get on the last agenda for Planning Commission. They hadn't provided all of the information that they needed, and I think as of, as of now, I don't believe they submitted anything yet. So they haven't received any approvals to open up from the city yet.
Did, was water usage and wastewater and filtration system and all that kind of, all those kind of things discussed?
There was no discussion on, like, with respect to filtration or onsite, and then the, obviously, the use would, they would have to have an appropriate size meter and equipment in order for whatever their desired or anticipated use would be, but that, that's not part of the ordinance.
Any other discussion?
Don't they, don't they usually come before us or not?
So this one...
I thought they would be.
Yeah, they would, they would be before, I think right now it's, they would have to, I think they're going to have to come before city council, but I'm not positive on that, because again, I haven't seen what they're, what they're submitting, but...
So, I mean...
Go ahead. You go ahead. You, you let me go first last time, so I'll let you go first this time.
No, I was just curious, because, no offense, but it sounds like you're a little unsure.
No, I am unsure on it. Unsure on the, whether or not they'd have to come before city council, because initially, we had talked about making it a special land use which would require them. I just don't see it in here, and I don't recall what we did.
Right, that's what I was going to say, is that the site plan would have to come to, come to Planning Commission, and I don't believe we made it a special use. It was special land use.
Yeah, there was some discussion, and I know, I'd have to go back and look at my notes, but I know we were going back and forth as to whether or not it would be required as, or would require a special land use approval, which would require council input. I just don't know if that...
Right, but we set it as a principal permitted use in the MX District.
Did we put it as?
Yeah, that's, that's in Amendment 3, on page 106.
As a personal service, not an industrial use.
Well then, to answer your question, no, it wouldn't come before this body. It would be approved by the Planning Commission as a site plan approval, assuming they met all the criteria.
Any additional questions?
So you said, say that one more time for me, and why did you say that? You said that because, did you say that because Karen mentioned that it was personal use?
No, I said it because Bruce reminded me, we did have a discussion as to whether or not to make it a special use. So it was left as a principally permitted use, which means that it's allowable in the MX zoning district, so long as they meet all the criteria that they're required to meet in that district, then it's a, the only approvals they would require from the city is a site plan approval, and the approving body for site plans is the Planning Commission. So if it was a special land use, then it would require, in addition to Planning Commission, would also have to come before city council for approval.
And it wasn't a spe, I did watch part of that meeting where they were talking about it being a personal service. Seemed to be a little bit of a stretch, but...
Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Mayor Garrett.
No.
Councilmember Jennings.
No.
Motion denied.
Next, you have reappointment of Will Fobbs to the Planning Commission.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Will Fobbs to the Planning Commission for the term expiring August 31st, 2026.
Is there a second?
I'm taking it, sorry.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. First of all, I don't, I don't know Mr. Fobbs. I'm just wondering about our policies, processes, and procedures. Previously, when someone's term expired, the position was posted, and the planning commissioners had to reapply. I'm speaking from personal experience, so I didn't see where this was posted, and I don't see Mr. Fobbs' application where he was reapplying. So I'm wondering why that process that has been followed isn't being followed again.
Was it posted?
I, this came from Kelda, asking me to put this in, and it came from...
It came from the Planning Commission, Suzie, but I apologize, I don't think so. I didn't see it posted.
Didn't see it posted. I didn't see it posted, but...
So it was, so the motion actually should be tabled to make sure that it was posted, and that everyone has, can have an opportunity, can have an opportunity to apply for it. Anyone want to make a motion?
The motion's already made.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. And was the second it?
Yes.
Okay, so then we do have to do a...
Roll call.
You proud of me?
No.[1779.15]
Yep, roll call.
Councilmember Canes?
No.
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Motion denied.
Next, we appoint a representative for the Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting.
Mayor, did you wanna consider a motion to table that item?
Yes, I do, actually.
I'll make a motion to table the item until it's been posted and opened up.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So next, is appoint a representative for the Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we have to have an elected representative at our, the MML Annual Conference for our voting for the city, to be a voting member for the city, and I have recommended that Councilmember Jalen Jennings be the representative for the city since he is still on the council for another two years.
Any other motion?
I'll make a motion to nominate Councilmember Jennings to represent the city at the MML Annual Convention.
Second. It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
Yes, so this is something that will be in effect until his term ends, or this is something that's done annually?
It's done annually. It is done annually, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. City Administrator Report?
I received a couple of emails, and I answered them from the council as they were coming in. One of them was Barb asked, or Councilwoman Canes asked if they could borrow the van for the senior trip, and I hadn't heard back if they were gonna borrow that for Thursday or not. They wanted to go to the fair because senior citizens get in free at the state fair. So, they would like to borrow the van, and I gave them the permission to do that. And I don't really have much other than the audit was last week, and we are still in the audit process. They will be back the week after Labor Day, so I am still sending them a bunch of information. And so we're trying to play catch-up within the finance part of it, plus still work on the audit for the auditors, so...
What's the age of the seniors for the van?
I'm not sure on that. Not sure. Do you know what the, the age of the van is?
Oh, I would think 62. I think that's what it is for the free tickets.
Okay, so only people that can be 62 and over can be on the van, be part of it, right?
Oh, for this trip?
Yeah.
I believe so. I haven't heard back from the lady yet. I've emailed her about it.
Okay.
City Attorney?
Just real quick, I did receive a correspondence back from the Attorney General's Office with respect to the ballot language that we presented for review. They were out of the office today, so I wasn't able to follow up with them, but I, we'll follow up with them tomorrow. Some of their, some of their concerns were that we had, we had included a couple of provisions, one of which that they were concerned with was the removal of the Justice of the Peace Office. I think when we, when I presented it to council, I had added that in there primarily because this, these charter amendments are more so cleanup, just correcting and removing areas of our charter that conflict with state law, and since we no longer have a Justice of the Peace, we haven't had one for 30-plus years, I thought it was appropriate to take it out. However, I will find out what his concern with that is, and I will report back to you, but just so you know that that may be coming out of the proposed ballot amendment, so...
Thank you. Reports from boards, commissions and committees?
Oh, I did have one other thing.
Oh, sorry.
So, with respect to the laundromat language that didn't pass this evening, if council or individual council members have feedback that they could provide to the Planning Commission, I do think it's an area that Planning Commission will have to address, given the lack of standards and the potential for an applicant. So, if there's some feedback or some guidance that council could provide to the Planning Commission, I think that would be helpful for them. So, just throwing that out there.
You need it right now, or do you need it during the study session, the next study session?
Well, if there's something that anyone has right now, because I know Planning Commission will probably meet prior to that.
I voted for it, so...
Just, just, if there's input, so if not, then we can talk about it at a study session.
Just upon the order, the study session, next study session is the 11th, and the Planning Commission meeting is the 18th.
Oh, okay, so we can discuss it at the next study session. Anything else? City Attorney?
No, nothing else.
Okay. Reports of boards, commissions, committees?
No, everything from the Planning Commission, we voted on today, so nothing to report there.
Any other committees?
SimCOG, I went to their last meeting in July. They met at, well, we met at Rochester Hills Innovation Hills Park. They just gave us a tour of the park and kinda gave us some good ideas on how they save money and keep the park running, funding and things like that, so planning on talking to Pam about that, just to see if we can incorporate that, or Suzie as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Unfinished new business?
I got one thing there. So, first off, just praise of our new code enforcer, Rob Harris. I've seen him at least seven or eight times in the, in the last two weeks, as I've been out and about throughout the city. And we had a long conversation when I bumped into him last week, and one of the things that he asked me about, and I subsequently told him that I would bring it up at a council meeting, in other communities that he's worked for in the past, when a, when a home is sold, the city goes in and does a code enforcement inspection. And he asked me if I'd be interested in bringing that up to council, and I thought that was a good idea. Basically, to make sure that, you know, when, when the house is sold, that everything is up to code, so...
That's not a good idea.
Well, I mean, it, I mean, if the house is up to code, it's, you know, safety, I mean, the example that I think of is like when, when, you know, personal example is, you know, my, my smoke detectors were, you know, inappropriate in number and in placement. And then when I had an addition put on the house, they came in, and of course, at that point, they can enforce codes, and they told me I had to change my, my smoke detectors, and so that made my house safer. So, obviously, we can't do that unless somebody does a project, so if the house is for sale, that would give us the opportunity to go ahead and do those kinds of things. So, I mean, do you have examples, so I guess two questions. One, if we were to discuss that and eventually do something like that, would that be something that would be administrative, or would that be something that we would probably put in as an ordinance?
Well, if you're, yeah, I mean, that would require an ordinance to allow for that. I, I have a lot of concerns about that, that...
Such as?
Well, liability being the biggest. If, if the city inspector goes in and, you know, that's why people have home inspections, and that's why home inspectors have very strict, limited obligations and liabilities based on the inspection they do. So now, the, the city is inviting themselves in, every home that's for sale, and we have a code officer that may or may not observe something and then potentially...
Liability.
So, I, that's just one issue, but, yeah, we'd be happy to discuss them, but that would require an ordinance amendment.
Do you, do you know of examples in any of the other communities that you work with?
I am not familiar with any communities that have that.
Yes, there are some that do have it.
The city of Detroit has it.
As a Realtor, it's, it's not a real positive thing. It can cause real issues with holding up sales and all that kinda stuff, because again, it's subjective, depending on who's looking at what, so...
Yeah, I mean, that's why I really agree to have so numerous houses in the city of Detroit. That was one of the things that caused me issue in having to pay more, which was not, what I had to pay to upgrade the house costs more than what the listing of the house was. Just saying, so, my thoughts. Anyone else? Or unfinished new business?
Yes, I had asked Pam about Golden Gate. I just wanted, if you would share that with everyone, the update on Golden, on the Golden Gate Park properties. The Golden Gate Park properties, I checked on the taxes. They're only one year back behind in their taxes, so it's not in foreclosure. The other thing is, I also talked to the real estate, and they were gonna talk to the owner about donating the properties to the city and taking a tax write-off. She said that she didn't think that the owner would go for that because they were, they tried to sell them to the city prior to this, quite a few years ago. So, and I don't know what happened there, but that's all I know for now, and they have not gotten back with me on the offer that I put out there for them, so...
Interesting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other unfinished or new business? Hearing none. Public comment. Speakers are limited to three minutes. You can speak about whatever you would like for three minutes. Anyone?
It's not about the rent, she's worried. She blames me for this. I'm Diane Anderson, and I'm not here representing myself tonight. I'm here representing the three flags chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, which is the Lake Village, DAR, founded in 1939 by the same women who, eight months previous, in February, had founded the Lake Village Women's Club. And I'm here tonight to thank Mayor Garrett for her help the last several years in getting proclamations from this council for Constitution Week, which every year is a national recognized holiday week, from the 17th to the 25th of September in a year, every year, when the Constitution was written in Philadelphia. So, thank you, Mayor Garrett, on behalf of the DAR, and it's coming up again this year. I'd urge the council to once again honor us with a proclamation for Constitution Week.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yeah, I just had one comment on the point of sale inspections. So, I grew up in Cleveland Heights, and my mom was a Realtor there for a long time, and yes, they were a nightmare, you know, and things happened. One case, someone bought a house and had to sell it six months later. Well, the city found that the neighbor's fence was on their property, and so before they could sell the house, they had to repair the fence, but the previous inspector didn't catch it. That came up all the time, new roofs, new, you know, new excavations, things like this, and they did interfere with the sales, and I, I think it actually hurt the city. There was never really good evidence that it helped, and so, I don't like point of sale inspections for that reason. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I guess I have to address the facts of the eight-seven meeting, because I have to say that Jason Hammond, you weren't in attendance at the meeting, so you couldn't possibly know the truth. The facts on the page that Kelda typed out are incorrect. My questions were not listed there, and therefore, my answers weren't, weren't met. And I think that an ethics committee should be formed to review the behavior of the last meeting. Bruce, you have a tendency to make fun of residents and people for their questions and constantly berating me for not knowing the, it's on tape, yes. I don't know the system. And I think a grievance should be filed against Scott Baker for his inappropriate behavior yelling at Kiran. You are here to advise and tell us about the legal things about what they're doing. And Kelly was asked to address a situation where she was called out for special favors by the DDA, and instead of answering, she got mad, gabbled and walked out, and then Bruce and Jalen quickly tried to end the meeting, and I think that these problems should be addressed. And I want Captain Quisenberry to know that this is what I've been talking about. These are the facts, and things need to be taken care of appropriately here. Thank you.
Any other, any other, um, I don't know who that is. Any other questions?
I have a comment, so, Jason Hammond. First of all, city council meetings are recorded on YouTube and published, so I saw everything that happened in that meeting. It's a lude that I couldn't possibly know, and that I should sit down, even though I live in the city and have the right to make public comment.
Excuse me, someone else is speaking, so please don't interrupt them.
Questions or comments that come up during public comment are not intended to be a dialogue, so you can propose all the questions you want during public comment, but that doesn't mean that the city council has to respond to you right away. Of course, they should. It should be good answers to questions if you ask them, but this is maybe not the forum for that to happen as a dialogue, and that's stated very clearly in the agenda. During the last meeting, Ms. Coons alluded to comments that were made by Bruce in the parking lot after a city council meeting. She wasn't there, and it wasn't recorded, so I don't know how you know about that, that you clearly misquoted what he said.
That's the second time, please stop interrupting.
I was there, so I know exactly what was said, and that's just a fact. The Planning Commission did discuss filtration of water waste and water waste issues during our discussions about the laundromat language, so I wanna make sure that that's known. I agree, we need to reconsider that. I did specifically bring that up for discussion, and we chose to focus on other issues related to the language that was proposed to you. So, I'm happy to get the opportunity for the Planning Commission to consider that issue. Again, I look forward to your feedback before our next Planning Commission meeting. There have been comments made about the fire hydrant system in our city putting our houses at risk. It's very clear that even though there are issues with the fire hydrants, no house in the city is at risk. The fire chief can get access to other sources of water in order to be able to put fires out. Nobody in the city lives in a house that can't be treated by the fire department. The water loss issues that were brought up during the previous council meeting, consultants had been hired by the city to help find the source of that water issue long before Ms. Miller, Ms. Canes and Mr. Jennings were on the city council. So those, Michigan First and Southfield Lather were both targets that were being investigated long before there was an opportunity for, or before any of those people were on the city council. So those, those targets were already being looked at, and people should know that. And finally, if city volunteers are working in the city to help clean up the city, and there are issues with how they are doing their job or what's being done to protect them as they're working for the city, those issues should be brought up with the people organizing those volunteers. It does not need to come up in a city council meeting unless there's an issue with the volunteer organizers not being responsive. But if they're being responsive, if they're there and overseeing and able to actually do something in the moment to take care of it, that's where that needs to be dealt with in a civil way. It does not need to come up in a city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else that would like to speak?
Hey, good evening, city, city council, Roger Lynn from Lathrow Village. Quick question for you. I see these meetings are recorded, but they're not on the city website. They used to be on the city website. I know you can get them through Facebook, et cetera, or on the certain channels, but a lot of our residents don't have that type of technology, or they're not used to it, some of the older people. And I would think it should always be on the city website. And I went back, and it looks like the last time they were actually put on the website, I think it was something like either March of this year. So I guess, I'm not sure why that is, since it's a city function, I would think that would be the first place where people would typically go. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention, and maybe you can discuss it and get it back on the city website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none. Mayor and council comment. First, first for Ms. Coons. Our city attorney is not for legal assistance. He's actually to protect the city from any type of legal issues that could come up. And there have been numerous ones that have come up within the last two years that he has protected us from. So the assistance with that would not be accurate for. The window, the, the way that the meetings are handled, let me explain that the correct way is, is that once you go into council comment, and that if it is not, I don't know, I don't wanna say deemed a... I don't want to say deemed a comment, I can't remember the exact way it was, but.
I think it was what, what you're, but if you're referencing last meeting, you indicated that Councilwoman Canes was attempting to have a discussion during the comment period.
Right, and so during council comment, the, the mayor has the opportunity to adjourn the meeting, actually, anybody on the council, as you may know, if you know how council comments go, is, or how council procedures goes, parliamentarian procedures goes, that anyone actually can adjourn a meeting. It was incorrect, it was incorrect in what you said, that I got up my left and they tried to talk, because I can't leave until they adjourn the meeting, so that was incorrect also, but, and we're not doing discussion, we're just doing the comment. Okay, so thank you. Mr. Lynn, yes, we will make sure that we look into making sure that the council meetings are put on the website. I'm not sure what.
Mayor, I think there, there's a link to the munico website, so all the council videos now are, are saved and available on.
It's a little difficult to try to find it, so I get what you're saying. It takes you there, but to try to put them somewhere else, we can talk about putting them where they're easily accessible for everyone.
I find the package, you know, where all the, the agenda is, and the notes, and all that stuff.
Are you saying they're not loaded right there?
It says, it says video, and it's empty.
Okay.
I would think that's where they would go through the calendar, because if you go through the calendar, it didn't references you to the other screen, I can't remember what it's called exactly.
Well, we'll make sure that is.
You put the dates in, and then you can find out.
Yeah, munico. It's, it's, it's by, I was on it the other day.
See, there's some, the last one on there looks like August fifteenth, Planning Commission, but.
So, we'll make sure that it gets put on there. And if it's not, just please let me know, okay? And that's all, oh, then what we do have that was sent is that the Elected Officials Academy from the MML, which I think three out of five have gone to that, is looking for board members, so if anyone wants to be on the board, you have until August thirtieth to apply for that, and I think you might have had, you might, the council might have that in their email. That's all I got. Anyone else?
Can you forward that? I don't think I've got it.
Okay. No one else?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Hammond, this segues right into what you were doing. I mean, in the past, the regular process has been, there have been joint meetings with council and the Planning Commission, and with the DDA. They've been on for almost two years, and we have had no such joint meetings, so I would like to propose that that happens, because we're all kind of working on our own.
Excuse me one second. Are you on set? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I would like to propose those joint meetings. I missed my opportunity to pull the disbursement reports, so there are a couple of things. In the disbursement reports, there's a same date on both pages, July first to the fifteenth, so that needs to be corrected. Then also, the credit card policy.
So, those are already been approved, so that's not something that we can go over, so it's already been approved and passed, so we can't go over that at this point.
Well, I can make comments on it.
But they're not going to be corrected, because we already made the, we already made the.
Okay, all right, well, it's wrong, okay. And then also, I just wanted to share, at the last meeting, there was a large packet of credit card statements and receipts and all those kinds of things that I had been asking for, for quite some time, and I asked some questions about dates being on the form, and about credit cards being paid off within the month, and also about credit card statements, the reward points being used for credit card statements. So, I did get the credit card policy the day after our meeting, and the date, the purchases were made are supposed to be on the forms, so I know Pam said she was going to add that. It also states that all credit card statements will be paid in full within thirty days, and then I called Flagstar, and they said that the points can be used for credit card, uh, statement credits, so we have about a hundred forty thousand points, so it would be great if we can use that towards statement credits. Also, in Mr. Baker's bill, refers to Michigan First versus Lathrop Village. What is that? This is from June, there's multiple.
It's a tax appeal.
It's what?
It's a tax appeal.
The tax appeal?
They've filed.
Okay, I know that one. Why has that not been shared with us?
I think I did initially share it when it was initially filed, but that's not some, I mean, it's probably not going to happen for a year or two, so it was just filed this year. I'll keep you updated as we get closer to the general hearing call date.
Okay, because they are our largest taxpayer by a lot.
It's a pretty significant, it's a pretty significant appeal, and I did, I let Pam know that I did reach out to the State Treasury Department to see if they would be interested in joining to support the city based on the value in contention. It's over six million dollars in taxable value they're contesting.
Okay, all right, yes, please, please do, keep us up to date on that. I noticed that sidewalk repairs are under the general fund, I was just wondering about that, and, and then there was a kitchen rental agreement, I don't remember hearing anything about that that was in.
A lot of those things you don't hear about, because those are day-to-day operations that the staff has me handle, and then I report back to the staff. So, those aren't things that generally get brought to council's attention unless there's a request made for it. The kitchen rental agreement, there was an individual that requested some structure in their rental agreement with respect to utilizing the city's kitchen, and so we prepared a written agreement for them, and.
Is that something that's open to anyone in the community?
Anybody that wants to rent, the city's facilities are open for rental.
Okay, this is an ongoing rental, kitchen rental agreement?
It's, well, it's based, it's an hourly agreement, I think she's indicated she wants between five and six hours a week, maybe two to three weeks a month, and she just wanted some structure with it, it's a new business venture she's starting, so.
Oh, okay, all right, well, then, that's open to other community members, let's put that out there, that would, that's, that's great. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Roger, just, the, the, the meetings are also, if you, if you go to the city of Lathrop Village on YouTube, the residents can, can go there as well. That's, that's usually the quickest place to get them, they're usually there like, I think, two days after, two days after the meeting.
Oh, sorry, one more thing, in response to Mr. Hammond, the water pressure flow isn't about fire hydrants, it's about water mains, and that, that is a problem.
Anyone else? Hearing none, take a motion to adjourn.
Before, mayor, I should say. This was hand, just handed to me, and she was wondering if she, she missed the public comment, but she wanted to talk about Suicide Prevention Community Forum that they were going to be holding, and she asked me if she would be able to talk about it.
Okay, you've got three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mayor Garrett. My name is PG, and I'm a community advocate, and I've been around the city of Southfield for about forty years. This event right here that's going to be held on Thursday, September fourteenth, at the Hawk, which is formerly Harrison High School at two nine 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 five West Twelve Mile, between Middlebelt and Orchard Lake. This is a suicide prevention town hall study session, it's a collaboration between the Southfield Police Chief and the Farmington Hills Police Chief, and this is part two. The first one we did was on gun violence, is it possible to reduce gun violence? If so, what is the solution? And out of that town hall study session, we had about maybe thirteen things that the audience members suggested to say that this is what we can do to reduce gun violence. So, the question we're asking now for suicide prevention is, what's next? What can law enforcement and the community do to prevent suicide? So, I'm asking that you come out, this is the second of a series, we've got five in total, and if you could come out and support this event, it would be greatly appreciated to law enforcement and to the people that are experiencing suicide, suicide tendencies, people that have already committed suicide in their family. This is something that we have to talk about, because our kids are dropping like dominos, and we want to know why. Is it the pressure to succeed? Is it social media? Is it bullying? But it's something serious to make a child say, or a veteran, or a person in general to just say, my life is no longer worthy, and I want to take it. So, please come out and support this event. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Second, thank you for coming out, adjourn.